Good evening. I know, but I went to the central office. Yeah, I could walk, I could walk out. Good evening. Good evening, thank you for coming. My name is Todd Dryford, I'm the principal here at Sparkman High School. I appreciate everybody else come, I appreciate everybody coming out this evening to tonight's board meeting. We won't, we hope not to keep you long, so with that being said, I formally request adjournment for tonight's meeting. Can I get a second? Appreciate it, thanks for coming. At this time, would you please stand and recognize the Sparkman High School color guard under the direction of Sergeant Powell?
I. 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 Arc. Arc. Order. Out. E. Arc. Free. Out. Order. Out. I. Arc. Order. Arc. E. 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 I. 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 E. I. E. E. I. E. I. E. I. Arc. Arc. I. Out. Order. Out. On.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Board President Brooks.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Madison County Regular Session Board Meeting. Mr. Heath Jones, since this is one of the schools that you represent, would you mind leading us in prayers, sir?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather this evening, thank you for your many blessings. I ask that you be with all of us as we convene this evening in the best interest of our school district, our students, and our parents, and our communities across Madison County. Thank you again for all your many blessings, and I ask that you be with us as we leave here this evening, and we ask all those things in your precious name. Amen.
Mr. Superintendent.
I recommend approval of the agenda dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the minutes dated February sixth in twenty-twenty-twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. President, District Highlights.
Um, I'll keep mine short and sweet because we, I know we have a lot to get to tonight out here at Sparkman, but uh, sports are going good. Madison County High School, New Hope, uh, got some good winning streaks going on, so just proud of them, and everybody's playing hard, and got a lot of good things coming, and that's all I'll say, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Mr. Bird.
Um, our District Highlights, our Monrovia's baseball and softball team have had a winning season so far. Boys soccer team is doing very well, and stand a good chance to win the tournament, they'll be very competitive. The girls in a rebuilding year. Uh, Sparkman High School soccer, which is special in my heart, is having their, their senior night tonight, and after the board meeting, I intend to go there.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, first of all, I just want to start by saying thank you to Mr. Dryford and his staff at Sparkman High School for allowing us to host tonight's meeting here. Um, all of our Sparkman family of schools, principals, and staff members that are here tonight, thank you. It really means the world to all of us that you are here. Uh, we're looking forward to your updates and showcasing your individual schools here in just a few minutes, but um, also want to uh, uh, say thank you to, we've got representation from three of our volunteer fire departments here that cover, uh, that responds to Sparkman High School for fire alarms, medicals, those type of things, and I just want to say thank you to Harvest, Monrovia, and Tony Fire Departments for being here tonight. Um, thank you for your service to, uh, not just our school system, but our communities as well, so. And um, at this time, I would like to call Mr. Dryford back to the stage. Allow him an opportunity to speak about Sparkman High School.
Good evening again. We have several things to recognize this school year. Um, these are just a few. Uh, there's been many, so forgive me if I have missed somebody or something. Uh, but it's been a, it's been a great school year here at Sparkman High School. Uh, hopefully you saw it posted, but we are the number twenty-one ranked high school, public and private high school, uh, in the state of Alabama as ranked by Money Inc. Magazine. So it's a, it's a great accomplishment, uh, per Mr. Cubic. Uh, for every slot we move up, uh, I get a dollar. Um, so I'm looking, looking forward to that. Um, lots of accolades here. Uh, of course, many of you know this, but our, our band, uh, won the state marching band competition, uh, back in November, so unbelievable performance by them. Uh, tremendous, tremendous band we have under the leadership of, uh, Mr. Nash and Ms. Manker. They do an outstanding, outstanding job. They also received superior ratings in the state music performance assessment, which was held a couple of weeks ago, uh, over at James Clemens. Uh, our choir, uh, under the direction of Ms. Collins, also received straight superior ratings at the same state choir assessment. So awesome job by our band. Athletically, uh, Joe Quez Keith took first place and broke the state record in the four-hundred meter dash at the seven-eight, seven-eight indoor track meet. Just barely beat my record. Um, I was, I was a little disappointed, but I, you know, all records have to fall, so good for him. And he also has the fastest time in the four-hundred meter dash and the three-hundred meter hurdles, uh, this year in the state for the outdoor season. Uh, so something to come out and watch. The boys' two-hundred meter indoor relay team, uh, with Joe Quez Keith, Elijah Vaughn, Caleb Thompson, and, and Braden Good, uh, placed first in the seven-eight indoor state championships. The boys' four-by-four-hundred meter relay team, uh, had a time of three minutes nineteen section, seconds, which is the fastest time in the state of Alabama in all classifications. In wrestling, we had two males, Hayden Mason and Sean Linden, and four females, Caleb Bonds, Jessica Cook, Kalia Leving and Kia Leving made the podium at state wrestling. Hayden and Kalia were state runners-up, meaning they took second place in their weight classes, so awesome job by the, by the wrestlers. Uh, the girl ba, girls' basketball team made it to regionals again, uh, where they lost to the eventual state champions, uh, Hoover High School. A little-known athlete, uh, but obviously a big award, Christopher, uh, Eagley received academic All-American Student-Athlete Honors and placed first at the state at his level in gymnastics. So, uh, pretty, pretty big deal for, um, Christopher. Kirsten Mosley, her article on celebrities and politics was published in a nationwide magazine for middle school and high school students, so great for Kirsten. Scott Coonfair, our science teacher, received the Alabama Public Television Excellence in Education Award for the month of March. Uh, Sparkman High School once again received its Purple Star designation, uh, affirming the school's commitment and support of military students and their families. Sparkman High School was renamed a Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, which is awarded to schools based on achievement of excellent performance in nine major categories, including areas such as challenging standards in curriculum, active teaching and learning, technology integration, leadership and educational vitality, as well as family and, and community partnerships. Only a small number of schools from across the nation received this designation, so we're quite proud of that. We also received a three-thousand-dollar grant from the U.S. Air Force to teach financial literacy to our seniors. So hopefully they won't have massive credit card debt or drive up your, your debt as they go to college, uh, but that's based on the Dave Ramsey curriculum, so it's quite a deal. And then last but not least, um, probably the biggest accomplishment, not really accomplishment, but just something to crow about, and I have to crow ba, for our faculty. Uh, we dominated, our faculty dominated the, uh, faculty senior basketball game last Friday. Uh, it was a beat down, it was, it was, it was really embarrassing for our seniors, it truly was, but uh, anyway, our faculty did an outstanding job. Shooting percentage was a little bit low, but our defensive rebounding was outstanding, so. Uh, I think it was like thirty-five to fifteen or something like that. No, we were thirty-five, I mean, yeah, yeah. I mean, we started with a thirty-point lead, but anyway. Thank you very much.
That's she, she was, I think. Greetings. Um, I am Nikisha Jones, Lead Administrator at Sparkman Ninth Grade School. Um, our mission at S-Nine is for all students to learn at high levels, and our staff, our phenomenal staff accepts this mission every single day. Um, we average about, uh, just over six hundred students per year with a ninety-five percent pass rate, so again, always a work in progress, um, but we're very proud of that percentage. Uh, we collaborate regularly with Sparkman High School, um, in regards to academics. Um, our students also participate in athletic and extracurricular programs through SHS as well. Um, however, S-Nine is a unique standalone school, helping students and parents, uh, to smoothly transition into S-SHS. Um, a few celebrations we've had thus far, uh, that we're proud of. Many of our students showed tremendous growth in regards to I-Radi assessments from fall going into winter. Um, two freshman students we've had in our building scored, um, in the ACT thirty-point club, one scoring a thirty, the other a thirty-two as freshmen. Uh, we had a student also to place third in the high school division, um, in the I Am Rosa Parks essay contest. Um, our JV co-ed cheer team placed second in the nation as well. Um, a few things that we are also looking forward to, uh, just to round out this school year. We're hosting our transition field trips April twenty-ninth and thirtieth for Mr. Trewix, uh, eighth grade scholars, as well as, um, Monrovia, um, I'm sorry, at Monrovia Middle, as well as Mr. Conway scholars at Sparkman Middle School. Uh, we have our spring I-Radi assessments, um, those dates are rolling here late April. Um, we also have our digital AP World History exams, which is new to us, uh, this year. Everything being offered digitally, but uh, May eighth, we'll roll with that, and high school graduation will be May twentieth. Um, Expo Day will host at S-Nine that, starting the morning of July thirty-first as well, and as always, it's a great day to be a senator. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dr. Kellen Conaway, I'm the principal of Sparkman Middle School. Uh, just a couple highlights to, uh, talk about the phenomenal year we've had at Sparkman Middle School. We set out last year with a three-year goal. Uh, last year was expectation, this year is exposure, and next year is going to be excellence. So we have, uh, done a very good job this year of exposing our students to high levels of instruction. Also, uh, we did show a lot of growth in our I-Radi score, and we also increased in our ACAP score on last school year. Uh, we continue to focus on academic excellence and creating a positive school culture. Also, uh, we are continuing to, uh, bring about, um, some additional facility upgrades. We're excited about the new softball lights that will be installed this summer, much needed. We're so excited about that. Our softball team actually playing right now, they're looking forward to, uh, being able to add that to their facility. Also, uh, we are excited about our caring closet that just got installed on last week. I'm sure you saw that post on Facebook. We're excited about that opportunity to provide our students with much-needed resources. Also, our band, uh, just recently scored an excellent rating at the most recent band assessment at James Clemens a couple of weeks ago. Also, uh, one of our science teachers, Ms. Lisa Costa, was elected as the president-elect for the Alabama Science Teacher Association, so that is a pretty big deal. That is a statewide, uh, science, um, initiative, and so she was elected president-elect for that, so we're excited about her representing Sparkman Middle School. And last but not least, um, on this past, uh, basketball season, our eighth grade boys and girls, uh, came out to be the county champions. So, once again, we're excited about the growth that's taking place at Sparkman Middle School, and we're moving into our Year of Excellence on next school year, so thank you for your all's support.
Good evening. My name is Jeri Anne Screws, and I'm the principal at Harvest Elementary School.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Walker, and I am Assistant Principal at Harvest Elementary School.
We have lots to celebrate about things that have been going on at Harvest recently. In the area of academic achievements, our school was recognized as well as a Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Lighthouse School for the second time. This is a prestigious honor for outstanding performance in key educational areas. We also recently held a Huskies Award Ceremony this spring to recognize student achievement and growth based on last year's ACAP scores by celebrating students who had outstanding performance or significant improvements. And we were recently named the recipient of a Tanger Grant, funding McWayne Center Science Outreach Programs each month that provide hands-on STEM experiences for our students.
We have also incorporated, um, several extracurriculum successes and student leadership organizations. Our student leaders, leadership opportunities are Student Government Association, providing students a voice in school decision-making. We have a Safety Patrol, encouraging leadership and responsibility in school safety. We have a dance club, providing teamwork, creativity, and self-expression. A Girls on the Run Club, which builds self-confidence, leadership skills, and healthy habits. And a Green Power Club fostering innovated, innovations, teamwork from STEM-based veh, vehicle design and competition. We're also having an upcoming STEM night sponsored by our school's PTO. It's do, it's designed to engage families and students in hands-on science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, activities, encouraging community involvement and creativity.
In the area of community engagement and service, we have, um, just recently received notification that we, our school has been renewed as a Purple Star School of Designation, so that recognizes our commitment to supporting military-connected students and their families. And we have also, over the last two years, implemented, uh, quarterly family focus group meetings, and those meetings are aimed for families to have an opportunity to share input on the future plans of the school, strengthening the school-community collaboration.
Uh, we also have staff and teacher recognition. We implemented a new professional development program. Its aim was to establish and maintain a positive classroom management environment as well as culture.
For facility and infrastructure improvements, we are in the developmental stages of two sensory spaces within the school. Those will support students who need assistance with self-regulation, providing calming environments equipped with sensory tools.
For our students' well-being and support, we have monthly assemblies celebrating students' achievements, which include academics el, e, excellence, encouraging students, um, for honor roll and academic improvement. We have a good characters award, which highlights acts of kindness, leadership, and integrity. We also are doing an attendance award as well as a behavior for our bus riders. Um, um, those are the great things we're doing at Harvest, and we thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Hey there. My name's Amelia Evans. I am one of the Assistant Principals at Madison Crossroads Elementary, and thank you for having me. Ms. Fisher sends her regards. She is on the soccer field with about fourteen of our comments, so good luck to her. Um, so we have lots of highlights that I could stand up here and share with you, um, but a couple of them, we were nominated for a class, uh, as a class banner school this year for C-Three Academy, which is an academy that prepares our students, or specifically our fifth graders, um, for SMS, getting them ready to go to middle school. Uh, focusing on data, turning in work, um, and other character, um, initiatives. Um, we also have cut our chronic absenteeism in half, and we contribute that to a few things that we have going on. One is something called Hive Days, where students, um, each quarter, they have chosen, um, an activity with a teacher in the school that they, um, can sign up for. For example, we had one, um, flower arranging club that I got to do one time, and it was a lot of fun. Um, but the students choose something that they're interested in, they go to, um, that club every quarter, and it's just a time for them to do something they enjoy and develop relationships with, um, an adult that's not their teacher. Another thing we're doing is we have, um, Students of the Month, and, um, those students are nominated by their teachers and within their grade levels, um, and then they win Student of the Month based on following our school rules, being kind, being safe, being responsible. Um, they get popsicles with the principals. They get to come in, tell us what they like about school, something they think that we should change, um, and they think it's the greatest thing ever. So, we get really excited for those days once a month. Um, lastly, we have our, um, STEM teacher, Ms. Carter. She received a grant for an outdoor classroom, so we're looking forward to revamping a space that's by our lunchroom, so that our t, our students and teachers have a chance for that hands-on learning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, um, Sparkman family. Uh, thank you for being here this evening. Those wonderful updates. Uh, Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Alrighty. Okay. I, I want to turn it back over to Superintendent.
So, just so you understand, our objective here is that we're trying to come out to the schools and have one of our board meetings instead of always having them at central office, because a couple reasons. It gives our board members from New Hope and Buckhorn and Madison County and the Gurley Area and Hazegreen a chance to come out here and visit schools out west, as well as giving our west board members an opportunity to go to the other schools, so they can see the district. Plus, it gives us a chance to show all the good things that are going on in our district. So, if you notice, we only had the north side of Sparkman on today. So, next month, we're going to be with Mr. Bird's district, and that there, we'll hear from Monrovia Middle, from Legacy Endeavor, and from Monrovia Elementary School. So they'll be there at that one next, next month, and that'll be our next regular session meeting. So, so what we're trying to do is just get out in the community and get to see the people that we serve, as well as giving our principals and our assistant principals an opportunity to share all the wonderful things that are going on in this district. Mr. Bird?
While Monrovia and Sparkman Middle both feed to Sparkman High School, when we didn't want to burden Sparkman's high school staff by having to here. Monrovia Middle School certainly is capable of doing this.
So it's at Monrovia Middle School?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so that'll be next month. Um, another thing, please pay attention to the Madison County Communications, uh, page, because we have an announcement coming up that we've had two schools that have been identified as national recognition, and, um, Ms. Bass will be announced tomorrow, is that correct? It's scheduled to go out tomorrow, and we're talking about two of our schools that have been recognized out of a hundred and ninety schools across the United States. And so, pay attention to that, that's coming. And so, pay attention to that. That's coming. Um, one of them is, uh, well, I won't tell you where they're at. Just pay attention, and you'll find out tomorrow. So that's real exciting news for us. Mr. President?
Um...
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Nash?
There he is.
Here he comes.
How's it going? Thank you so much for being here. Uh, my name's Brenton Nash. This is my third year being the head band director at Sparkman High School, and a couple of really exciting things about our program. Uh, we've got two-hundred-and-fifty-three students, two marching ensembles, three concert ensembles, two jazz ensembles, two indoor guards, and an world-class indoor percussion group. So we got a lot of things going on. In fact, one of our guard groups is actually rehearsing in the band room right now. It's- there's always something going on, which is outstanding. Um, you saw our jazz band if you- as you came in. This is the third year that we've had a jazz band back up and running. We're really excited about that. We've had thirty-three students make District Honor Band this year, which is more than everybody else in the district, which is not a contest, but we like to count because it's fun. Um, we also had fifteen students make All-State Band, which is a very, very big deal. Um, that festival in Allstate will be in Mobile and, um, on April seventeenth, I believe that is the date. Um, also, our indoor guards are gonna be competing at the SCGC Southeastern Color Guard Circuit Championships on this weekend in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and our indoor percussion group is gonna be competing in Dayton, Ohio. Mr. Gilreath? April ninth through thirteenth, um, which they're gonna go try to, um, do the keep the awesome things they're doing, which Mr. Gilreath, by the way, is new to us. He's our new percussion director and our head band director at the S-nine, who's done a fantastic job. We've also had another new hire in- in our band cluster at, uh, Sparkman Middle School, Mr. Craig Kegel, who's done a fantastic job, and we're really excited about both of them as being a part of our staff. Uh, we won the state championship this past year. It was a really fun thing to do, and Bands of America is a national circuit of marching band contests that exists, and we placed third at the Birmingham Regional, which is the highest placement in the history of the state of Alabama. So we were very excited about those things. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite our directors and other, uh, our drum majors, which are leadership from that band, to come up and take a picture next to the trophies, as- as assuming I did remember my instructions appropriately. That's what I'm supposed to do right now? Okay, cool. Alright, we're gonna do that now. Because, you know, photo op and stuff. Let's give it up for our outstanding leadership team. Let's go this way, guys.
Yep, the Caring Link Closet, Ms. O'Neil?
There she is, yeah.
Think I got it right, yeah. I mean, he did it and he works here, so surely it's okay. All right, so my understanding is that there's a button. Yep, that one works. My name is Kate O'Neil and I'm president of the Caring Link. And before I get into who we are and what we do, I want to take a moment to visualize. We're going to use that exercise, that part of our brain. And I want you to imagine that you are have a new job as a construction worker, okay? So you have a new job as a construction worker and you come to the job site the very first day. And you show up and you see all the other construction workers and they've got a hard hat and an orange vest and steel-toed boots, and you don't have any of those. They showed up and those things were provided to them, so they showed up and they had them. But you can't work until you find those items. You're not OSHA compliant. So you've got to go and you've got to hunt down, you look around, you find this lost and found of some some equipment they have, and you find a hard hat that's too big, so it's kind of falling in your eyes, but it's going to have to work. You find a vest that sat out in the rain, so it smells like mildew, but again, you just got to go on. And you find some boots that are too small and the steel toe isn't really steel toeing anymore, but oh well, because you've got to get a paycheck. And so you go and you try to get to work, and the job for the day for everybody, all the construction workers, is you have to build your portion of a wall to complete the building. So you're ready, you're equipped, except you don't have a drill, you don't have a screw. So now you're looking around for those items. Well, your foreman has an extra drill, and you find some screws on the ground, but the drill bit doesn't fit those screws. So then you have to take the time to go around everybody's truck, and you're lucky enough to find some rusty nails and a regular old hammer. So at this point, you're two hours behind and all of the searching for all of the equipment that you need to do this job. And not only that, but the equipment that you have, it means that you are going to take twice as long to complete the job that your coworkers are going to easily master and be done with. So they're going to move on to doing roofing, they're going to move on to electrical, they're going to move on to plumbing, they're going to move on to project manager, and you're still going to be building a wall. Now, some people would say, well, that's a grown person. It's their responsibility to provide those items for themselves, to show up prepared. Now I want you to substitute the construction worker for a student. I want you to substitute the hard hat and the vest and the shoes for sneakers and shorts and a T-shirt. I want you to substitute the drill and the screws and the nail and the hammer for pencils and calculators and notebooks and hygiene products. Students every day across our county show up ill-prepared and not through any fault of their own. They are living in hardship and they show up wanting to learn, just like their classmates, but unable to apply that focus because they lack basic essentials with which to perform their best in the classroom. And yet, research shows us that education remains the most consistent means of breaking longstanding cycles of poverty. So how do we break those cycles? How do we help these kids learn? We meet them at the ground level with the basic resources they need. For my educators here, it is Maslow over Bloom. You meet them with what they need so that they can focus in the classroom and do just as well as their better-equipped peers. That's what we're trying to do at the Caring Link. You heard already from Dr. Conaway that they now have at Sparkman Middle School a care closet. We put that in last week with the help of Huntsville Junior League, and we are so excited. On the docket still is a care closet at Sparkman nine. That's going to happen in May, but before that, Sparkman High School is happening April seventeenth. Super excited, and these are all with help from the Junior League. So what we do? Well, first of all, we put these care closets in. They are on-site. We remove the obstacle of having a guardian in between the resources and the children who need them. They don't need somebody to take them to a clothing bank, to a food bank, to a school supply drive. They are right there on-site. All they have to do is come to school. You want to talk about a reason to attend? All of the resources you need are there. Right now, we're serving over twelve thousand students in the county. That includes our homeless student closet on Central Office Campus, which we are so glad to have. That is also a closet that is available to the other social workers in schools that we're not in. So they have keys and they're able to go in for some of their most at-risk students. We stock everything. We look at our own kids and we say, what are you wearing? What are you using? What should you be using? Please put on deodorant. We put it in the closets. It's hygiene products, it's clothes, it's shoes, it's coats, it's jackets, it's school supplies, it's snack foods, it's meal items. We want these kids to be just as prepared as our own every single school day. Now, what are our other programs? Because we're not just care closets. That's our main deal. Once we put in the two remaining Sparkman closets, we'll be at fifteen closets. And ten of those are in the Madison County school system. But we also have our book fairy program. This is usually run from our elementaries to our middle schools, where we provide book fair gift certificates to students in need who cannot afford to shop alongside their peers because we're trying to promote literacy, equality, and consumer skills. A lot of children who are living in hardship have not had the opportunity to go shopping, to weigh choices, to think about tax, to think about if I get this, I might not be able to get this. Those are important life skills, that financial literacy. We also have our Care to Join program, where we sponsor extracurriculars. We have done so with Hazel Green High School band members, who have not been able to pay. We have paid their fees, we have paid senior fees, we have paid for a nurse to be at the Moores Mill Intermediate Running Club because a student needed a nurse there all the time, and that gets expensive, so we've paid for that. We've paid for scholarships to the Camp Invention. So we are here to help because we want all students to have the enrichment opportunities that only some have. And if you are a Sparkman High School student, you may have heard of or attended our pop-up prom shop. We just finished out our season. We gave out over a hundred and forty dresses and over thirty suits. We bought some prom tickets, so we want to make sure that there's a sense of equity among peers and that they are not missing this milestone event simply because of finances. We also have our class snack bin program. That is through the elementary and intermediate schools. So each classroom gets a refillable snack bin, and we have that refill station on-site that we stock every single week. And that's something special about our closets. We stock them every single week so that the next kid and the next kid and the next kid is provided for. Finally, we have our Halloween boutique. That's at our headquarters in Hazel Green. So free costumes for kids and students and high schoolers. We have adult sizes too, don't worry. If you want to go trick-or-treat, harmless fun, come and see us. Grab a costume. We want everybody to be able to participate. New beginnings. We are gearing up for that now. We are fundraising like crazy. So if you go and share and visit our Facebook page, you will see fundraiser after fundraiser after fundraiser. You think, what are they doing with all this money? It's new beginnings. It costs a lot. It's our school readiness program. It's back-to-school clothes, hygiene products, school supplies at Flint River Baptist Church. But we also provide free haircuts, vision, hearing wellness, dental screenings. You get access to a whole bunch of other nonprofits providing services, all in a one-stop shop. That's going to be in July. So we have all of these programs. And you might be asking, how can I help? Because we need help. We're only two years old. So we're trying to do a whole lot in a short period of time because there are a lot of kids to help. Number one, I did not come up here and publicly speak to not ask for money. I'm always asked for money. So you can go to our website, thecaringlink.org. There's a donate page. Get a tax receipt. We are 501(c)(3). But if you can't do that, we will gladly take your sweat equity. You can volunteer with us. We have a full closet team for Sparkman Middle, but we are still looking members at members for our closet teams of the high school and the ninth grade school. The people that go and maintain every single week, they're a three-person team. You either count, you courier, or you restock. It's pretty simple. We just demand about forty-five minutes a week. So we're looking for those members, but if you can't give that and you just want to volunteer somewhat, you can absolutely reach out on our website. I also have some brochures. You can come and see me after the meeting. And finally, you can share our outreach. If you work at a company that offers grants, offers sponsorships, let us know. A lot of times you have to have an in with those companies, so it's good to know an employee. If you ever see a fundraiser and you think, this would be good for the Caring Link, please pass it on. I don't sleep a lot, so you might get an email back around 2:00 a.m. So just get that information to me. I promise I will get back to you and we will make a connection. So we just ask for your help, however you feel what that help looks like. We ask for your support, your prayers, your kind thoughts, your volunteering, your money, so that we can keep doing what we're doing at places like Harvest Elementary, where we're not yet. You're on our waitlist. Thank you very much.
So we had a request to address the board. He's already called you, Ms. Ashley. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Based upon their information provided to request to address the board, we will hear your comments in executive session under the general reputation and character exception of the Open Meetings Act. So at this time, I will, before we go, we're going to take this in executive session. We'll be right outside this room. And then we'll be gone a few minutes, and then we'll come back in and move on with administrative items of the board meeting. So I just, right now, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to go to executive session. All those in favor? Ah, we're in executive session. So, Mr. Superintendent, administrative items?
Yes, Mr. President. I recommend approval of the bids and bid renewals as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah.
I recommend approval of the Hazel Green High School artificial turf project as submitted.
Motion. Second.
I have two motions and two seconds. Do I have any discussion? So I was just going to ask, so this is going to be to turf the football field at Hazel Green High School, right?
Correct, sir.
Okay. And this is something we're looking to do throughout the county?
Correct, sir.
For all the high schools on down the road?
Correct, sir. The, that would include eventually Buckhorn and New Hope High and Madison County High. Madison County High is a little bit different because of the the track that's around there, and it's a liability to the school board. But not only that, it would provide us with a track and a track for the west side of the county, which is Sparkman High's track, and then you'd have a track for the east side of the county. So we'd have two competition tracks where we can, right now, we only have one track that can hold competitions for the entire county. And this would help, you know, to generate, so Buckhorn could use one, Hazel Green could use one, New Hope could use one, and of course, Sparkman has it, and then Madison County eventually would. So the the plan would be probably Madison County High School's next, and then Buckhorn and New Hope would be on the list after that.
And that this football field would potentially be ready for this football season, the Hazel Green?
The Hazel Green one should be ready for fall, for playing on fall of 2025, this this fall.
Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah.
I recommend approval of the contracts or services as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah.
I recommend approval of personnel items as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ah.
I recommend approval of the principal contracts as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah.
Mr. Brooks, if I can pause for a quick second.
Go ahead.
Congratulations to our principals that are coming back. We have, our principals have really, we've gotten some really good principals, and we have several coming off probationary status and going on three con, three-year contracts. And so we're real excited about the group that is getting three-year contracts and moving forward with these group of individuals who are working hard every day in our schools for their communities, for their families, and for their students, so, and their staffs. Can't forget about staff.
Congratulations.
All right, sir. I recommend approval of the assistant principal contracts as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah. So that concludes our meeting. I'll open up. Do we have anything for the good of the board?
No, I do not. I just want to say thank you to Sparkman High School once again, and for everyone's attendance tonight. Really means a lot for you to be here, and, Mr. President, we can go ahead and you can adjourn your meeting, but I'd like to get a board photo with Ms. O'Neil.
I'll jump in there on that too and say thank you to the Sparkman family for having us out here in a beautiful place and appreciate you having us out here.
One quick thing, sir. Four seventeen, that is the regular session. That will be at Monrovia Middle School. So that again is April seventeenth at Monrovia Middle, and that will run up, ride, round, round out our tour for this year. And then we will start back again with District one. We do District one, two, three, four, and five. We just do them in order. We will start back with them in the fall, which it's hard to believe that graduations are about two months away. So it's it's almost that time to get ready for next year already. So again, Monrovia Middle School on four seventeen. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah, we're adjourned.